Good evening. Welcome to the October 28, 2019 Board of Trustees Meeting. Before tonight's meeting commences, I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence remembering every brave man and woman that has served this great country of ours, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance tonight by the Riverside Daisy and Brownie Troops 7, 6, 9, 9, 6. Ladies, if you come forward, you'll lead us in the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, Girl Scout Attention, colored guard attention.
Colored guard advance. Color guard, most of color.
Come on.
Color guard.
Wait a minute. Pause.
Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard dismissed.
Let's give it up for the girls one more time. That's some of their going to be tomorrow's leaders and that's got to make you feel good. Next up, roll call attendance.
Bartalata.
Here.
Birch.
Here.
Frasca.
Here.
Joliette.
Here.
Marquis.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
Okay, we need to approve tonight, October 28, 2019's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the October 28, 2019 agenda.
I support.
Any further discussion on that? All in paper, raise your right hand. Opposed? There are none. Under announcements, Waterford Township will hold its 2020 budget discussion meetings on Tuesday, October 29th, and Wednesday, October 30th, that's tomorrow and this Wednesday, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. both days. These meetings will be held in the third floor interior conference room here at Township Hall, 5200 Civic Center Drive, and yes, they are open to the public. Suggested trick-or-treat hours for Halloween on this Thursday, October 21, 2019, here in Waterford Township are from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Some neighborhoods and associations choose to extend that time by leaving porch lights on as an indication they are still distributing treats. Trick-or-treaters, please look both ways before entering a roadway, utilize reflective items on dark clothing, and carry a flashlight, please. Go out in groups and/or with an adult chaperone. The Waterford Police Department will scan candy between 6:30 p.m. and 8:30 p.m. right here at the Waterford Police Station on campus at 5150 Civic Center Drive, Waterford, Michigan, 48329. Attention all snowbirds, please contact the Waterford Assessment Department with your department, your forwarded address if you are leaving town for the winter. Even though you may have your mail forwarded by the U.S. Postal Service, property tax bills and assessment notices are not forwarded and will be returned to the Township Assessment Department. Please call 248-674-6270 to let us know your winter address. Help support the Waterford Goodfellows' mission to ensure no family goes without a Christmas. Stop by the Kroger Plaza located at the corner of Crescent Lake Road and Highland Road on Saturday, November 2nd, that's this coming Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to help stuff a bus with donated toys. The Goodfellows are seeking donations of new unwrapped toys and games for children of all ages to include in their 2019 holiday baskets provided by the Waterford, for the Waterford families in need. Waterford Goodfellows Christmas baskets, if you or someone you know lives in Waterford or whose children attend Waterford Schools and are in need of a Christmas basket this year, please come to the Waterford Recreation Center, or as the old timers call it, the CAI, on Saturday, December 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Bring your license with a current address. If you do not live in Waterford but your children attend Waterford Schools, please bring your student's current report card or a letter from the school stating they attend there. The Waterford Rec Center is located at 5640 Williams Lake Road. This will be the only day to sign up, and the Waterford School District did furnish the bus this year in a joint effort with the Goodfellows to stuff for toys, so thank you to the Waterford School District. Beginning March 30, 2020, Waterford Township residential single-family homes will transition to utilizing GFL Environmental USA Inc. as a single-source hauler for curbside collection of solid waste, recycling, and yard waste. For more information, please review the informational flyers on the Township's website at www.waterfordmi.gov/trash. Subscribe to updates. For continued updates on the transition to the single residential waste hauler, visit www.waterfordmi.gov/trash, or click to subscribe to notify me text slash email updates. Census Day 2020 is observed nationwide on April 1, 2020. By this date, every home will receive an invitation to participate in the 2020 Census. The Census provides critical data that lawmakers, business owners, teachers, and many others use to provide daily services, products, and support for you and your community. Every year, billions of dollars in federal funding go to hospitals, private departments, schools, roads, and other resources based on Census data. Resident questions or concerns can be answered by calling 1-800-923-8282, or go to www.2020census.gov. The Census is critical, so as the information comes out, please respond to it because every municipality benefits by the head count and the amount of residents they got in their community, so it's critical, so please respond to the information they send out and make sure you get counted. Under awards and presentations, Waterford Police Department, appointments and promotions.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'm Scott Underwood, Police Chief here in Waterford Township. This is Kevin Kaziek, Deputy Police Chief. We're extremely excited to be able to recognize a number of our own officers here for promotions, and we're also happy to recognize several citizens for contributions that they've made recently in assisting our police department. So if Matthew and Christian Baden could step forward? On May 19, Waterford Police Officers responded to the area of Airport Road and Hatchery Road for a suspected intoxicated driver that nearly caused several traffic crashes as he traveled roadways in the north end of the Waterford Township. Matthew, along with his son, Christian, eventually able to get the driver to pull over near the location before calling 911. Arriving officers subsequently took the suspect into custody for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated with a high blood alcohol content. The Waterford Police Department Awards Board is recognizing Matthew and Christian for doing the right thing and have awarded them a Waterford Police Department civilian citation. We couldn't do, we couldn't do what we do without the help of our citizens, and when people in this township see something, we urge them to say something, and in this case, you both did, and who knows what could have happened had you not made the call that you did. We appreciate your help. On May 16, 2019, Waterford Officers responded to the area of Highland Road and Cass Lake Road for a suspected intoxicated driver that nearly caused a traffic crash attempting to exit a business parking lot. Fifteen-year-old Antonio Correa called 911 to report the driver and provided clear and accurate information, ultimately leading officers directly to the suspect who was subsequently taken into custody for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated for the third time. That's a felony, and the Waterford Police Department today recognizes Antonio for doing the right thing with a civilian citation. Once again, we couldn't do what we do. In this case, Antonio helped us take a person off the road that obviously had no business being there and prevented who knows what kind of tragedy, so thank you for your help.
If we could have Officer Kelly Johnson, Julie Jazinski, Josh Cardenas, Tim Gilo, Nicholas Fotio, and Robert Vanderclipf step forward, please. At a time in this country when it's hard to recruit good police officers...
It's hard to recruit police officers in general, let alone recruit good police officers, and we feel very fortunate that we were able to recruit these officers. We believe they're, they're, they're top-notch at what they do. They've demonstrated that by performing well in our field training program. Each one of these officers was hired on a part-time basis with an eye towards being able to bring them on as full-time police officers. I'm happy to announce that we've done exactly that with each one of these police officers. Officer Kelly Johnson was hired as a part-time police officer on April 19, 2018. He was promoted to full-time on August 28, 2019. Julie Jazinski was hired as a part-time police officer on September 17, 2018. She was also promoted to full-time on August 28, 2019. Josh Cardenas was hired as a part-time police officer December 17, 2018, and he, along with Officer Tim Gilo, who was hired part-time on December 17, 2018, was, both were brought on full-time as of September 21, 2019. Nicholas Fotio hired part-time June 24, 2019, full-time September 21. Robert Vanderclipf hired part-time July 15, 2019, September 21, 2019. This is the future of our police department, and we're proud to have him. with promotions. This is an achievement not only for them, but for our department as well. Their experience and their knowledge has been demonstrated over the years. They've worked hard, working at holidays and gaining all the knowledge that they can, working on off shifts, being away from their families, and have also taken the time and put in the effort to do what they needed to because they had an interest in being promoted to help shape the future of this organization, and we're happy to say that we believe we have, we have three good ones. Stan was hired as a police officer on February 20, February 28, 2000. He's promoted to the rank of Sergeant, and that was effective September 28 this year. Stan has had a number of assignments within patrol services, including evidence technician and accident investigations. He's also made an impact on the future of our department as a field training officer and a member of our training team. Stan is going to be an important member of our patrol supervision group. Chris was hired as a police officer on March 3, 1999. He's promoted to the rank of Sergeant effective September 28 of this year. Chris has also had a number of assignments in patrol services, including motor traffic and accident investigations. He's also helped shape the future of our department as a field training officer and a member of our training team. We believe Chris will be extremely valuable in his new role as a patrol shift supervisor. Congratulations, Chris. Brent was hired as a police officer on November 12, 1996. He was promoted to the rank of Sergeant on March 31, 2007. He is promoted to the rank of Lieutenant, and that was effective September 28 of this year. During his distinguished career, he has had numerous assignments in both investigations and patrol services. In 2018, Brent was recognized by the Police Officers Association of Michigan as Police Officer of the Year, and he was also a 2018 Valor Award recipient from the Hundred Club of Michigan. Brent's experience will serve him well, and he will be a valuable asset as our Patrol Services Bureau Commander. Congratulations.
We believe as an organization it's important to recognize our achievements and our individual successes, as well as the achievements and help of the public, and we appreciate the Board allowing us the opportunity to do so as well as all of you, for that.
That was visible and factual proof of how fortunate we are to be residents in Waterford Township and have a top-notch, top-of-the-line police department that we have serving us. And again, as I said earlier, our first responders, both police and fire, they're 24/7/365. Those jobs never stop, and they do a wonderful, wonderful job taking care of us. The best of the best. Next up, we have our consent agendas. Is there anything anybody would like removed prior to me going over it? Okay, we have the October 15, 2019 meeting minutes. Today, October 28, 2019, bill payment. The Police Department's third quarter 2019 reports. Parks and Recreation, September and October 2019 reports. Treasurers Office, September 2019 report. And a banner permit for the Waterford Garden Club.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, this involves bill payment, so it's a roll call vote.
Birch.
Yes.
Bartalata.
Yes.
Marquis.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Joliette.
Yes.
Frasca.
Yes. Okay, next up, Board Liaison Reports. Do something I've never done before. Tony, kick it off.
I'll start it off. October 21st, Eagle Lake, Board met. It was a very short meeting. My next meeting is March 2nd at 4 o'clock over at Waterford Water Resource Building. Planning Commission met October 22nd. We just discussed next year's schedule and community block grant money with that. And on October 23rd at overtime, youth assistants had a luncheon, which was a very good turnout. Very nice.
Cable Commission, nothing to report.
Margaret.
Nothing to report.
Okay, this past Thursday evening at the Shark Club was the four-community Auburn Hills, Pontiac, Waterford, White Lake, the Elk Magic fundraiser, and that was a fundraiser to support the Holiday Extravaganza Parade, which is always the first Saturday in December downtown Pontiac, where the kids come out with eyes the size of silver dollars to see Santa for the first time, and that is a fun-filled event, and I know, I didn't get the numbers back from the committee, but I know the previous best attendance was 213 in Waterford last year. This year, it went to 240. The best sales of 50/50 tickets was $910, $15.95 this year, and the best sales on the, what was it, the raffle tree was, the lottery ticket raffle tree was $480, and this year it was $980. So we just kind of shot it, it just went off the charts with attendance, the raffles, everything, and raised, like you said, raised more money than we ever raised before for this parade. And again, it's a fun-filled family event, and again, that's put on by the, it's Elk Magic fundraiser, and that's for the Holiday Extravaganza Parade, so to all of you that attended and gave your support, we surely appreciate, and there was a lot of sponsors. In fact, the gift basket from Waterford had $450 in gift certificates to local restaurants. So again, thanks so much to the locals that supported that, residents, businesses, and alike.
Well, we have an election coming up, this Tuesday, November 5th, so be sure to vote, exercise your right to vote. You can either do that as an absentee ballot, and if you choose to do it absentee, they must be into my office by Friday. Friday's the last day that you can mail it to me, that I will receive it. After that, you must come in in person and bring it into the clerk's office. Having said that, we did install a new drop box. I don't know if any of you have seen it, it's over by the Police Department, so please make sure to use your ballot drop box out there. You can drive up to it and just drop your envelope right into the box. And I did have some announcements with the library. There's a superhero storytime Saturday, November 2nd, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:15 a.m. in the library Storytime and Craft Room. It's for ages three to eight years old. Come dressed as your favorite superhero, listen to marvelous stories, and make a dynamic creation. There's the International Gamers Day, Saturday, November 9th, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. in the Storytime and Craft Room. All over the world, people are playing games on this date. Our library is participating with a wide selection of board games. Bring your whole family to join in on the fun. That's all. Thank you.
Karen.
This last Tuesday, I attended the Oakland County Senior Advisory Council Annual Breakfast, and the U.S. Census was there presenting. Just interesting fact, we know the importance of doing the survey for the Census. There's actually $675 billion at stake here to be distributed. Each person represents $8,000 annually, so please respond. It's going to be digitally this year, and if you don't have access to the Internet, it'll be via phone.
Okay. Art.
Only thing to report for Hess Hathaway is that the next meeting is November 14th.
Okay. Okay, under new business, request to purchase a boating high-speed scanner for Ballot County.
Make a motion to approve purchasing a Heart Inner Civic Vitality Central High Speed Scanner for $90,000, and a budget transfer to account 11910-97133, Capital Computer Equipment.
Support. Any further discussion on this? Anything you want to share, Kim?
Well, we're having to buy this because of the proposal three that has went into effect. That's allowing anyone to vote absentee, 18 and older. It used to be... It used to be you had to be 62 and older and have a good reason. Now, if you are a U.S. citizen and 18 and older, you can vote absentee. Our absentee ballots are continuing to grow. We've set a record this year for the number of absentee ballots that we've issued and this is just a special election with one question on the ballot. So we're trying to get prepared for our future by purchasing this machine because we're expecting our absentee ballot count to go up and above this. The city of Troy has four high-speed scanners. We will have two after this one. Rochester Hills has four. We will have two. Those are similar jurisdictions as far as the number of people, the number of absentee ballots that they process. So it's not like we have too many of these. We do need another one to at least have a backup and it will also help count for our future increases in our absentee ballots.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Okay, roll call vote.
Bartalata.
Yes.
Birch.
Yes.
Frasca.
Yes.
Joliette.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Marquis. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, next up is the janitorial services contract.
Russ, can you come down?
Yes, sir. What could I help you with?
I see that you want to switch services from PBS to LGC Global.
That is correct.
You said that PBS you, due to the performance issue, what was the performance issue that you weren't satisfied with?
We have several throughout the township. You know, if it's not the library, the DPW and Town Hall, we've all experienced lack of service at times. The library just recently had a, an experience where over the long weekend, you know, nobody showed up, completely abandoned us. We've had excuses from PBS that they couldn't get into the DPW building because their access card wasn't working. Well, we had video and we reviewed the video and we didn't see anybody attempting access to our building. So, you know, there's been concerns even here on the floor. Like Gary said multiple times, they come in, turn all the lights on and they leave. When they're done, nothing's turned off. How many times our garbage cans haven't been emptied? Just overall, the performance has been worse than lackluster.
How long we've been using them, the last couple of years?
One year.
One year. Did we have a couple of year contract with them or just a one year?
Actually, the way the contract is done is they have a one-year contract with an optional second and third year. And at this point, what we're, what we would like to do is to opt out of second and third year and use the third bidder. Because what had happened when we originally awarded this contract, it was the second bidder who got the contract. The first bidder was who we had previously, Do-All Company. And their performance was voted by the Capital Improvement Committee. They voted that we'd go to the second bidder and it was a difference of about $200. Well, this is the third bidder and the difference is significantly higher, like 50% roughly. You know, so it's a, it's a huge increase. Gary sat in on a meeting we had with the, the third bidder and if they're half as professional about their service as they were the presentation, we should be in much better shape.
Yeah, it's about a $43,200 increase, LGC. Have you had any references from LGC or talked to anybody that used them?
We have. We've talked with a couple of, they use, there are a couple of different communities that use them. I believe it was Oakland Schools was another one that uses them. And, you know, we've had positive results. One of the things that we, we were impressed in the presentation is when they go into a room, they actually take pictures around the room and they go down a checklist of what they expect their, their people to do. And then as their people are performing their service, they have to go down the checklist and digitally record what they've done and what they haven't. One of the, and I don't remember exactly which one. I could go through the list here. Find the guy, one of them lives here in Waterford, right on Scott Lake Road. One of the, he was the project manager. I don't know, that's probably not the official term that they were using, you know, but his title, his official title. But yes, here in Waterford Township, we do expect a little better performance. If we have a concern, they will come in, the management will come in, they'll address the concern and they will revise their digital workflow to reflect any complaints that we have.
If the board decides to approve this contract, when will PBS be out of here? When will LGC start?
PBS, their contract ends December 31st, 2019. And then we would elect to go with January 2nd for the beginning of the LGC.
They'll start off 2020 at $132,597.03.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, that's all. And, you know, it's part-time. I'm not here, so I don't know if the waste baskets are emptied or if we leave here at nighttime or not. So you guys would know better, but I just, this question of a little bit more money and I thought we used this company, PBS, for a while.
No, this was our first year that we were using them. And again, we, with the Do-All Company, we experienced some similar problems, but at least they'd come in every night, you know. But PBS, we've had experiences where they just didn't come in and no show and now we're monitoring the billing to make sure that, you know, okay, you didn't show up on this night, don't be billing us for it, you know. It's been administratively very difficult.
Refresh my memory, why did we award the bid to them begin with? I can't remember.
PBS?
Yes.
There was a recommendation from the Capital Improvement Committee. That's where all the department heads get together and with Hugo. And when they would go over, you know, services and what they were expecting, what they got from Do-All Company and then what they expected and, and it was a recommendation from that committee, from the Capital Improvement Committee originally.
Okay, thank you.
And they did meet with the companies and discuss with them what the concerns were. So, I mean, it was done. Again, like you said, we had a meeting like three months in and the service was bad. It just was not good. With me with the owner, it got better, but it was still at best was mediocre. And I know recently that 3D weekend, we had garbage in the back kitchen on the second floor and you come in Tuesday morning, you could hear, you'd just gag. It was so bad. It was just, it was horrible. They didn't come that weekend again, or the Town Hall, at least on the second floor and clean up. And the returnable cans were disappearing and there's just a lot of different things and it just, it all added up to just very poor service we're getting. And I did put a plant and instructed everybody that traveled the second floor corridor of a piece of shredded paper about three quarters of an inch long on the hallway, 17 days before it got vacuumed up. So, and that was after telling them, run your vacuum, you're not vacuuming, you're not vacuuming. And again, it just, there it laid. So, I mean, it was, it was long overdue, but we had a one-year contract with them. So we waited it out, but it's, it's, again, it's time, it's time to move on.
During the, the initial consultation with the one-year contract, they were promising four people on campus at any time, you know, every, all weekend basically or all, every night. And two was the best that we could see. And we, we've had plenty of weekends where there was one person here for the entire campus. You know, that's, that's a tall order.
Russ, I got one other question for you. And sensitive areas like the Treasurer's Office, do they come in at nighttime when nobody's there or?
They do.
Or do they do it during the day?
No, it's basically, the only time they're here during the day, as far as I'm aware, would be the library on Fridays when they're closed. Cause library Fridays, we're supposed to be getting a deep cleaning, you know, where they go through and do a, a more thorough cleaning. And, and again, that was kind of an oversight, I guess, on their part.
Certain sensitive areas, they get free rein.
No, my office.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Yes.
That's why I was asking. How do you get your office cleaned? Come in the morning or when you're there?
They don't come around.
So you don't get your office cleaned?
Yeah.
We pay for it and you don't get your office cleaned?
No, no. Sensitive offices are locked up. They don't have access to it. There's places over at the 51st District Court, they don't have access to because they're secured areas. They're secured areas in other parts. They don't have access to my office. We have a vacuum cleaner in there and a dust cloth. And again, set the garbage cans outside, they empty them out. Set the recycling bins outside, they empty them out. They don't come inside though.
How does your office get cleaned then?
He cleans it.
Okay.
Yeah, and that goes for the entire DPW too. If we want anything done, Joe's got a vacuum in his office. I maintain one in my office. If we want to do some cleaning in our offices, we, we do our own, you know, because there are some.
I'm just curious about.
Some issues out.
How they handle sensitive areas.
No, we.
They don't get in the sensitive areas.
Okay.
And then one other thing that was kind, and I love kids, they're wonderful, but to come by on a Saturday whenever we're assessing, people called me and said that there was two kids playing inside the offices at the second floor on a Saturday and Noah dawled around. So again, and that's, the kids weren't doing anything wrong. It was under the leadership that they were not under. And again, and I understand sometimes people gotta take their kids to work. When my son was little, I used to love to go pick him up at lunchtime and take him out and put him on a sheet of plywood in front of the job of the house I was framing with this handy, handy toolkit and a handful of nails to have fun, but not in a township government building without supervision. So it just, you could go on and on and on and bore the public to death, so we'll leave it at that. Okay, anybody else? Okay. This is a roll call vote.
Wait, I have a motion. I make a motion to award the janitorial services to LGC Global Energy FM LLC for year two with an option for year three. Total is, for year two is $132,599.03 and year three is $136,574.94 for a total of $269,171.97.
I'll support.
Any further discussion on that? Okay.
What was the total on that, Kim?
The total for both years?
I got 270, $270,034.95.
I've got the number she read off.
It's on the cover letter, $269.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Okay.
Oh, I see on the cover letter. I'm looking at the bid.
$269,171.97 for both years.
And my math could be off, Tony, so.
Your personal.
I try to be.
I'm looking at the bid sheet here.
The first number is 133, 132, let's see here, 597.03, correct. 132, 597.
Okay, roll call vote.
Marquis, yes. Joliette.
Yes.
Frasca.
Yes.
Birch.
Yes.
Bartalata.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Next up is a contract extension with Liquid Force, a granite company.
I'll make a motion to award a two-year contract extension to Liquid Force, a granite company through calendar year 2021 for trenchless rehabilitation services.
Support.
Any further discussion on that?
They've been, they've been a pretty good company, haven't they?
Just since 2004, we've been using them. So, yeah, we, we've got a lot of faith in them and they do an outstanding job, yes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Joliette.
Yes.
Bartalata.
Yes.
Marquis, yes. Wall.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Frasca.
Yes.
Birch.
Yes.
Okay, next up is a request to add Decal Inc. Mechanical Contractor to our approved single-source vendors list.
I motion to add Decal Inc. Mechanical Contractor to our approved single-source supplier list.
Support. Any further discussion on that? Okay, roll call vote.
Thomas.
Yes.
Marquis, yes. Wall.
Yes.
Joliette.
Yes.
Frasca.
Yes.
Birch.
Yes.
Bartalata.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
Next up, we have the fiscal year 2020 Michigan Drug Court Program and Michigan Veterans Treatment Court Grant Award Notification.
Is this, this more of an announcement, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Certainly, I welcome any questions.
It's a memorandum.
Yep.
Okay. And it appears that we're getting a grant. Good job.
You want to come down?
Sure.
Come on down. You're the next contestant on. Several pennies in prizes and awards.
Good evening. My name is Jen Tom. I'm the Court Administrator for the 51st District Court in Waterford. Every year, we seek assistance funding in the form of grants through the State Court Administrative Office. We have two programs, a sobriety court and a veterans treatment court grant. Notifications were a little bit late this year due to the state fiscal budget getting passed at the buzzer, but we were awarded $99,000 for the 2020 fiscal year. $61,000 of that will use, be used for our sobriety court program and $38,000 will be used for our veterans treatment court program. Those funds are primarily used to help curb the costs of the participants in the program for drug testing, substance abuse, mental health treatment. We also pay for a part-time veterans treatment court program coordinator through some of the veterans treatment court dollars. So there's no additional money required for the court's budget. It's just kind of pass-through money. We wanted to make sure you guys were aware of and are okay with us accepting.
Good job.
Thanks. Excellent work on the grant. So that goes to Angie Reed. She's our Chief Probation Officer and she wrote both the grants this year. So huge kudos to her.
And all it takes is one graduation ceremony there and it just, if that, if that doesn't convince you, I don't know what will.
Even the failures, we get some letters after people have failed out of the program and they thank us because the, the seeds are planted for recovery. So we're really proud of both our programs. We actually have a graduation coming up in early November, first Thursday in November. If you guys would like to come, we'd love to have you. That goes to the public too.
What's the date on that?
You know what? I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look at the, is it the 7th?
I know it's before firearms jerseys and openers of 15.
Okay, yeah, it is. Well, we purposely planned that, so, thank you.
The hunter must have scheduled that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Jen?
You have the dates, right, that you need to submit your contracts by December 13th and then update your budget by November 1st.
Oh, yes. This is common practice. We're working on a DocuSign contract this year, so we're working our way through getting signatures on that.
Yeah, we just want to meet those deadlines. You did a great job and we just want to make, make those deadlines.
Oh, yes. Yep.
Great.
All right.
Job well done.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Angie, good jobs.
Yes.
Okay, this brings us to the end of our regularly scheduled agenda. Now, we will open up for public comment and remind the public you will be limited to three minutes. First up, we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Allison Swanson.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take a moment to talk about our 33rd annual harvest happening that we had earlier this month on September 6th, Sunday at Hess Hathaway Park. This event has been a longtime community tradition and I wanted to thank our 150-plus volunteers that took the time out of their schedule that Sunday, even though some great football games were on and it was a beautiful fall day and I'm sure everyone had yard work to do. But we had over 150 volunteers from the community come out and run the event and in the course of the five hours at Hess Hathaway Park, we saw over 3,100 event goers and it's a record for us. The weather was perfect. It was a beautiful day and we are so thankful to all the community members. And we are so thankful to all the community members that attended the event, that sponsored the event, and that volunteered their time to make this event possible. So if you guys were there that day, you know, you saw, you know, the amazing turnout, the record crowd, you know, we were pressed to find places to park everybody, but it was wonderful and it's a great problem to have when you have that many people there and you're not sure where to put them all. But thank you to all the community members. Most of the events that we run through the Parks Department couldn't be done without, you know, our staff and our volunteers from the community. So we never can say thank you enough. Thanks.
Thank you. That speaks volumes for Waterford. Set an all-time record at the beginning of the month for Harvest Happening and towards the end of the month, we set an all-time record for the magic fundraiser of both events here in Waterford Township. So that speaks volumes for the generosity of the people in this community. It does. Okay, we're open for public comment. If you'd like to come up, please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tom May. I've been a resident of the community for about 30 years.
I'm sorry I didn't catch your name. Could you please repeat your name?
My name is Tom May and I've been a resident of the community for about 30, thank you, for about 30 years. So I consider us all neighbors and I wanted to address, if I could, and I know it's a done deal, but the single waste hauler. And what I wanted to address on it was, is I kind of did my due diligence and tried to find out how this was going to affect us all. And I'm a senior citizen and my fellow senior citizens. When I started asking questions, I was struck by a term we use in business called unintended consequences. And I was told that one of the reasons we did this was because there was going to be huge money savings from creating a monopoly for one company that would be passed on to its residents. And you're all residents. We're all neighbors. We all try to do the best we can for this community because we love this community. And I looked at my situation as a senior and in this 12-month cycle, I'm actually going to be charged 20% more than I've ever been charged before for waste hauling with this change. Then someone told me that the reason this change took place was for better service, trucks not rolling up and down the roads, collecting trash throughout mornings and afternoons. On my block, with all of my neighbors, our trash gets put out on Sunday night and on Monday morning, for 10 years, it's gone at 8:00 AM. And one thing about garbage, you just want it gone. You don't ask a lot of questions about it. And then I wondered about the consequence of the people that were being put out of work. I met some of those people that worked for some of, at least one company that Dave and Terrence will find out next week whether they and their families have jobs and they're our neighbors also. My last question is, and I don't quite understand this, why it didn't ever become a ballot issue? We had an election in 2018. We have a big election for our democracy coming up in 2020. And I don't quite understand why this was never put on the ballot for the residents to vote on. I'm done in 37 seconds.
Okay. You're, you're set? Okay.
And judging by the people that are here, I, I have to believe that there were some unintended consequences of this decision.
Okay, but I, I can, I can give you some history. Okay. In 1998, it was put on the ballot for the voters of Waterford Township to vote, okay? And I'm just, I'm just gonna present, just I'm not being a smart aleck, I'm not making stuff up. At that time, there was one municipality that butted the borders of Waterford Township, north, south, east, west, that had a single hauler. That was the city of Pontiac. Pontiac had its own garbage service within the city government, okay? Fast forward 21 years down the road, there is one municipality that butts Waterford's border now that doesn't have single source hauler. And every municipality that went to that did it by a vote of the city council or the township board. That's how it was decided. It wasn't decided by the voters. It was decided by the people that were elected to represent the municipality.
But not to interrupt, but since it affects all of us as neighbors who are trying to do the best we can for our community, don't you think those neighbors should have some say in what's going to affect their life? Again, for me, and, and for most of the senior citizens, I know that 20% isn't going to be life-changing. The service, unintended consequences, the, the excellent service that we got over 10 years, first with Smith and then with a company called Advance that we're all angry at right now because they pulled out on us. But these unintended consequences, at least we could have had some sort of voice from a ballot issue by being able to say, yeah, this is something we want to do or no, this is, this as a majority. This is what democracy is all about. And I don't, again, I understand what you're saying and I understand about municipalities and their rights. But I really think that in the future, and, and again, I'm not going to change the past. We're not going to change this. It's a done deal. I've sent my money in and I'm signed up with GFL. But in the future, I think on decisions like this that are going to affect all of your neighbors and yourselves, that it, it, it just wouldn't be that hard to make it a ballot issue unless there was some specific or special reason that you just wanted to avoid it.
Okay, and again, that wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a backdoor deal. We had, I've heard all kinds of accusations made. We had several public meetings. We spent 19 months doing research, talking to other municipalities, meeting with other municipalities to find out what the consequence is. Now, prior to the Summit Place Mall being demolished, and thank goodness it's down, that was the number one complaint that we got here in the township, that I got at my desk and the trustees heard about was the Summit Place Mall, the Summit Place Mall. Then you start tearing it down. A few people come out, said they were devastated. They couldn't believe it was going away. But again, that's what it is. So the number one complaint we get now is the condition of our subdivision streets. By going to a single hauler is it's going to fix the roads? No, that's not what we're seeing. That's the number one concern. The only way to fix subdivision streets is through a special assessment district and that's AD through the Road Commission of Oakland County. Your association, your subdivision, your neighborhood, whatever you want to call it, gets together. 51% of the voters sign a petition. They go to the Road Commission. They tell you what it's going to cost. It goes in your tax bill. You pay it for 10 years at 6% interest to fix your roads. The number two complaint we get is the amount of garbage trucks people have, have traveling to their neighborhood subdivision association. You're talking about one street in the township. We have to think as a board about the entire township. The number three complaint we get is the amount of school buses going through neighborhoods. Well, I'm sorry, but our children need safe transportation to and from school and they need to be educated. So that, I understand and there's, but again, the kids got to be taken to and from school. Back in the old days when we had 28 elementary schools operating in Waterford Township, there was one in every neighborhood. There were no buses for grade school, just junior high and high school. But times have changed. They're down to nine elementary schools now, you know, like one-third of what they used to have. And a lot of them get buses that take them to that. And I understand buses go up and down the subdivision streets. But the safety, health, and welfare of our students going to and from school is of the utmost importance. So the buses have to be there. Okay?
And, and I understand, but the number one complaint, and we're not here to argue about it. Again, this is done and we're all neighbors. But the number one complaint you got, I know it didn't come from our block or our service. I don't know what kind of service I'm going to get from GFL. I know, and my neighbors knew what kind of service they got for the past 10 years. And so unintended consequences were in, in the middle of unintended consequences. You all didn't want to be in the waste hauling business, I'm sure. Well, whether you know it or not, you're in it now because the net that you threw out pulled us all in. And so consequently, when somebody's trash isn't picked up, I don't know if any of you have tried calling GFL over these past few weeks, but they're a very difficult company to get in touch with. The calls are coming here. You're in the waste hauling business now. And by the way, if people don't remember, I've lived here for a long time, about 20-some years ago, the township tried something similar to this. And after eight months, they gave up on it. And when I asked why they gave up on it, they said, and they didn't have a five-year contract, but I had questioned how good a contract is against these multinational companies anyway. They said to me, we found, and if you talk to those people in supervisor's office, we found that we were in the waste hauling business and we didn't want to be in the waste hauling business. And that's why we're putting it back to the residents. Again, the decision's made. I'll certainly live by it and I'll be a part of it. But I really think in the future, these decisions that take in the whole, the whole township, all of your neighbors, we should have a say in it.
I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Sir, can I say a couple of things to you?
Sir?
Can I say a couple, make a couple of comments to you that you made? You know, I, I took this matter very seriously and I called and talked to a lot of people. I talked to supervisors in West Bloomfield, Congress, they have GFL and they're very, very happy with the service. My brother lives in West Bloomfield, loves the service over there and the cost and everything. So we all did our homework before we, we voted on this and we did this. You, you talked about lost jobs. You, you know the reason Advance pulled out here? Probably not. Advance called me up, called the supervisor's office up. They left here because they said their employees were quitting and going to GFL to pay more money. Um, I talked to my trash guys a couple of weeks ago. They said only two people left to go to GFL. That was true. Got another phone call. They wanted to keep their employees to the March 30th deadline. They wanted 35 employees. They wanted the township to give a $3,000 bonus to each employee from the $105,000. That was absolutely out of the question. They basically said, hey, I'm not getting the contract. I'm taking my ball and I'm going home, you know? They, 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 they're brutal, 1,000 people out here. That's why the phones are so jammed up. My wife called, took three days, but we got our service starting, not this Friday, but the previous Friday. So Advance basically just shown, told us, you know, up that.
As I, as I said, I have no doubt that you're doing what you believe is going to be in the best interest of this township. And that, you know what?
Sir?
Okay, we can't wait for time.
Talk into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry?
Talk into the microphone so they can hear you.
You know why this is such a great place to live? Because our children grow up, move on with their lives, and then come back here to look for homes. And, and, and so again, you're doing what you believe is right. And I support you 100% because it's going to affect my life and my children's lives. But again, in the future, I just make a point that those things that bring us all involved in it in this democracy, we should all vote on.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am. You're on deck, sir. You're next.
You researched for 19 months.
I'm sorry, excuse me, could you please?
Waterford resident.
What was your name, please?
Twyla Stottlemyre. You said that you, you researched for 19 months and you said that you did your homework. Well, I didn't. I'm one of the people that Advance has left stranded. So you guys did all this homework. What am I supposed to do with my trash? I've tried for a week to get ahold of them every day for my lunch hour. I can't get ahold of them. I've, I left two messages to call me back. I went on the website, Waterford Trash. I still have heard nothing. Everybody I'm talking to, it's $165 and they want the money upfront. I don't have that money. I can't give it to them. I see Northwinding. I see where people's dumping their stuff over there. I see Lock Haven. I see where people's dumping stuff over there. I don't want to be one of those. My, my neighbors are going to hate me because I'm piling the crap up. My today was my last day. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do.
Excuse me, have you, you've tried calling Advance or GFL?
GFL.
And they haven't returned your call?
They have not returned my call. Twice. And then I-
Please, please, no. Please, remain orderly, please.
I don't, I don't know what to do.
And I, I feel the phone calls like yours. And again, and every time I get a call like that, I call my contacts at GFL and explain the online portal, the telephone number, no return phone calls. And again, like I said, alls I can do is pass the information. And I know there's a lot of people think-
When the rats start coming in, we've, we've, I'll tell them what you're saying.
But again, Waterford Township Board of Trustees didn't create the situation, advance disposal by bailing on their prepaid customers.
We were going to all have to go to GFL?
What's that?
Everybody knew we were going to GFL. All of us were going to, whether we wanted to or not. So they should be prepared for this.
Five months from now. The contract is March 30th, 2020.
So what am I supposed to do for five months?
You're going to have to contract another hauler.
Thanks.
Please, please, don't blurt out from the crowd. Remain orderly and come up and speak. That gentleman right there on the end of the aisles next, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name's Robert Tarschowski. And I have the same issue. I have tried to contact GFL five times by phone. Today, I was at the front desk and they said, try and use the website. I tried to use the website and, and got, made no progress there. So now, Advance, this was their last day to pick up my trash. I'm left with the same thing other people in the community are left with. What am I going to do with my trash for the next five months if I cannot contact anybody from GFL? My other issue is, this was supposed to be a savings to the community and a better plan. With Advance, my bill, if anybody would like to make a copy of it, was 63.72 per quarter. That's $21 a month. Or GFL is $165 for five months, which is $33 a month. Plus, I have no say in that $165. Even though I'm a senior citizen and I'm a veteran, I don't want recycling. I have to play the flat rate of $165. I don't understand why I should be subject to being gouged like this when I don't need these services. I just want my trash picked up. I just want to be able to contact GFL so that I can have my trash picked up so it's not piling up in my driveway. And then the city comes by and writes me a citation because I got trash in my front yard. So you tell me, what am I supposed to do? And why is this costing me more when it was supposed to be such a great program for the community? And we're not into March 30th or our first year or the second year or the year after that when rates continually go up. So can somebody answer these questions for me?
Well, the 165,000, or I'm sorry, it was $165 for the five months was a cost because Advance pulled out. Our contract, I don't know if you've seen this, starting April 1st, is $51 per quarter. And that's if you want recycling. If you don't want recycling, it's 37.76. But since you're a senior, it should go down to 36.63 a quarter.
Actually, 35.7.
One more.
It's a 5%, if you're a veteran or a senior, you get a 5% discount.
Well, that's good news, but what am I supposed to do with my trash now?
Until then, and I understand that. And we've been inundated, uh, my offices-
And you're blaming that on, I'm sorry to interrupt. You're blaming that on Advance. But what position does that put me in? I mean, I, you didn't create, I didn't create the contact with GFL. But I'm being subject to not having a place to put my trash, even though I've tried multiple times to contact them by phone. I've tried to use their website. I don't know what to do with my trash. That, that, I don't know what to do with my trash.
There's only two carriers that I know of that were picking up. We had one call us on Monday morning and said they were aware of what Advance did and that was Kids Disposal out of Clarkston. But the last I heard, and that was probably Thursday of last week, that they weren't, they weren't taking any more customers. They were, they, they had maxed out. Yeah, they had maxed out. Now, it's GFL and again, I talked to GFL three different times a day and then they left me a message just before I came in from our work session to the board meeting. I got another message from them. But again, alls I can tell you, and I know you don't want to hear it, is to- But again, alls I can tell you, and I know you don't want to hear it, is to continue calling them or go online to their portal, to see if you can get registered. And when one of our trustees was talking, I mean, I, I had advanced disposal too, so I had to go through the same thing. And what I just did is I got ahold of them, emailed me an invoice, I paid it, put a check in the mail, and was done with it. But again, I said, but that's, I don't do things electronically. I just don't do that. Yep, I don't pay things with credit cards and stuff.
I've heard 8:00 AM is a better time to call.
They were.
Number are you using? Because there's supposed to be a designated number for our residents.
It's the 204 number, I believe.
Yep.
That's the one I've been calling.
That's supposed to be dedicated to Waterford Township.
They're not giving back.
No, they are not.
When was the, I guess, when was the first time you left a message?
I'm just concerned about my trash.
No, I, I appreciate it.
No, it's legitimate concern, sir, it is.
It is, and it was our understanding that they are going to take all of the customers. They're just, they're obviously inundated with eleven thousand customers to get through, to set up.
Not only, you know, it's not just myself, but different people.
We understand that.
They cannot get somebody to pick up their trash. You're talking about rodents and, and.
No, absolutely.
Stump in front of people's houses. This is, this is not just something you push underneath the cup, the rug. I mean, if we can't get it, somebody, and I've tried Kids, and I've tried, I think it's T N, T something.
TNR.
Yeah, and I'm not getting any response because of Advance backing out. Everybody's overwhelmed, they don't have the clientele. But this is what's happened to people like me in the community, who are left here like I am. What am I going to do?
We're going to have to contact GFL and see what kind of turnaround time that they're going to have to, to take care of all of the calls that they have now.
I will keep trying. I would like to make another suggestion also. At one time, we had recycling on Hospital Road across from, I believe it was Anderson's.
That wasn't recycling, that was yard waste. That was yard waste.
It was where?
Yard waste.
Yes, yard waste.
Yeah, it wasn't recycling.
That was yard waste. That worked out well, except for it wasn't managed well enough. They were bringing in stumps, large logs, large brush, and you got overwhelmed by it. I think we need to open up another program like that, where it's just leaves, but it's managed better, where the community has a place to take their leaves.
DEQ and the MDNR, their regulations changed, and that's why they got shut down over there because below down there, there's a natural wetland. You know what I'm saying? That was kind of up on the side, there's a natural wetland, and that's why I was told they closed that. I don't know if that was the truth or not, but again, we, we've looked at that. I haven't since I've been honest, but I say we, the township, had looked at that, and basically with the regulations from the DEQ and the MDNR, there isn't any sites that I know of in Waterford Township that would accommodate that because we have so many wetlands, so many waterways and lakes in our community. It's just not an ideal place for it. That's what I was told, so I never did look into it. But it would be nice to have a place for yard waste, it would.
Is Harrington Park off of Lock Haven Road considered a wetland?
Yeah, the whole, twenty acres behind it is a natural wetland that's undeveloped.
What about the front, front side of Lock Haven Road?
I don't know, but along there, I don't, I don't know what, where the wetlands come in and what the regulations are. Yeah.
Their baseball fields, their baseball fields in Harrington Park.
The baseball field, yes. The front part off of Lock Haven Road has been, being filled in. There is a company there that runs a tree trimming, a tree services. I've been filling in that land with chips for years now. And I bring that up because we were concerned about DNR and wetlands. Also, on White Lake Road off of Andersonville Road, they have an area, I don't know whether or not it's still operational, that they were taking leaves, compost. And that seems to be working well. There probably isn't a wetland, I don't know, but it seems like we might be able to find someplace within the township where we can do something like that actively, again, is take leaves too. We have the equipment, F and O does, facilities and operations, bulldozers, front-end loaders, backhoes, excavators. Those leaves could be easily marched over and turned over with a bulldozer to create a, a good topsoil for our soccer fields, for our fields and the ball fields. It could be very productive. That's all I've got to say. Thank you. Your turn.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Patty Vitisinski, 5738 Shetland Way. Thank you, first of all, for saving me money, starting April 1st with my hauler. Unfortunately, it's going to cost me more because we were one of the unfortunate group that got left behind. And I come to you, kind of admonishing you, but hoping that you will take this as a constructive criticism. When you arrange for a contract for the citizens, please make sure we are covered between the time you announce the contract and the time the contract goes into effect. GFL obviously has the capability of picking up, and I don't think it's quite eleven thousand, but many thousands of additional clients between now and April 1st. It would have been nice had a caveat been put into the contract that says, if your hauler, for any reason, stops picking up your garbage between the time we announce this contract and the time the contract goes into effect, GFL will pick you up at the new contracted rate. It would have been nice to be protected. I know the police cars have to serve and protect on them. I kind of think it's your job also to protect me as a citizen, and I don't feel very protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? You're next, she's up, you'll be next.
Hi, my name is Kathy Neville. I'm a Waterford resident. I'm here on behalf of my parents and their neighbors. You know, they're all senior citizens. My parents are on a fixed income, have many doctor bills. They can't afford a hundred and sixty-five. When GFL took, or when all this happened with Advance, I mean, it should have been forecasted. They have to make up for what they're losing in a timely manner. You know, the, the township should have granted some kind of reprieve for them to hang on until March 30th. You know, I mean, they're a company, they have to pay their employees, they have to pay everything. They should have been compensated somehow. But now the citizens of Waterford are being, you know, hurt by this. My parents are senior citizens, they're on a fixed income, their neighbors are on fixed incomes. They can't afford a hundred and sixty-five. What are they supposed to do? My sister lives in Waterford, right behind Summit Place Mall, she's, she's got rats. So now, if she doesn't get a sing, if she doesn't get garbage pickup, it's only going to get worse. Since they took down Summit Place Mall, around that area, there's been more rat infestations. So now it's only going to get worse because people can't afford GFL. I just think there should have been something else in play for these people. You know, people can't afford it. What, what are they supposed to do? You know, they've called, they called TNR, they called Waste Management, and they called, one of the other neighbors called a different company. They won't come in because we have a contract with GFL, is what they were told. So that leaves GFL. Kids already out, you know? I mean, these smaller companies can't handle it. So now what do they do when they can't afford a hundred and sixty-five dollars? And us kids can't afford to take up the slack from my parents to pay for their garbage pickup. So I, I just think that it should have been more thought out in case that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. So the public knows that when we sat down after the bids in Advance Disposal bid, Waste Management bid, GFL bid, Republic did not submit a bid. The other three did. So when we sat down for the bid opening and went over everything, GFL was the one that had the only complete bid. And then the ones, Waste Management and Advance Disposal, the parts that they had bid on that matched up, GFL was less than theirs, and there was parts that were incomplete. So that said, I asked GFL in the meeting, if our biggest carrier, I didn't name a name, I said if our biggest carrier decides to bail, will you be able to pick up the customer base? They said yes, in thirty to forty-five days. My belief would be seeing some majority of the customers at Advance Disposal were paid through the end of the year. The 12/31/19 would be when they would discontinue service to their customers. GFL and Advance Disposal were working together to make the transition a smooth one when Advance Disposal around the first of October said they were going to bail sooner than later. They sent out a draft letter that would go to all of their customers, had information from the township, Advance Disposal, and GFL. I tweaked the township wording, GFL tweaked their wording, Advance redid the letter and sent it back out, and we agreed that would be the letter that would be sent out. October 17th, after I came out of a meeting seven o'clock at night, there was a message from my contact person at Advance Disposal saying, the deal fell apart, it's not going through, we're not giving GFL our customer lists, we're not selling them our containers, and that was the end of it. So I called the next morning, I called GFL, yes, they confirmed that's the way it was going to be. So at that point in time, GFL started to put the wheels in motion, but like, when the letter went out, and I was told that letter would be mailed out on Monday, which should be eighteen, nineteen, the 21st, the letter would be mailed out. Ten o'clock Friday morning, had a resident bring me a copy of that letter to the debt counter at Town Hall saying, they'd already got it, and it wasn't being mailed out till Monday. So that wasn't necessarily truthful, what I was told, but that came in, and then come Monday, the lid blew off because the letters arrived on Friday and Saturday, and then Monday. I know my assistant fielded over two hundred phone calls in one day. And the reason they did that, and you can blame the township, you're free to say anything you want to say. Advance Disposal chose to bail on their customer base before 3/30/20. They just did, that was a decision they made. And the bid letting, when I said to them, will you be able to take it on? They said yes, but they'd need thirty to forty-five days to do so. So I'm figuring they could get set up, be in motion and ready to go by the end of the calendar year, but again, there's no guarantee how it's going to work out. You can only guess. If you can only, you can only guess. I mean, you know, you got people saying the world's coming to an end. Okay, but is it going to come to an end or isn't it? I don't know. I'm going to assume that it is, and I hope that it doesn't. Just like I hope Advance Disposal didn't leave prior to the end of the contract and leave eleven thousand customers, and that's the number we were given. They have eleven thousand customers here in Waterford Township. Take care of their customers. The last time I checked out, they make money picking up garbage, and if people have prepaid to have their garbage picked up, why would you bail on them? I don't understand it from a business standpoint, and I used to be in business. I understand business, not as good as a big company like that does, a multimillion dollar corporation. But at the same time, I know a little bit about business, I was successful in business. But the bottom line is, I didn't bail on my customers. If I bail on my customer base, I have no income. There is no income left, done. So I, I don't understand why they did that, but they did that, and here we are, because I am an Advance customer also, as other members on the board are, here, here, and here. So I mean, it just, we, we're in the same situation, and yeah, I make enough income, I can pay the a hundred and sixty-five dollars. I, I, I know that, but that's what we were left with, and alls I can do is continue, encourage you to continue trying to get ahold of GFL till we get this resolved. But they told me it would be a thirty to forty-five day window to take on eleven thousand customers. That's a big transition. They had, you know, five, almost six months to get things in order for the March 30th, 2020 transition, but this here is just, it's overnight. And like I said, as of Thursday this week, they're done picking up garbage in Waterford Township. So again, I just, there is no solution to it other than to keep trying to get ahold of GFL for them to come and pick up your garbage, be your new hauler. And again, it's thirty-three dollars a month. For five months, it's a hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's their pricing, not ours, and that's the pricing that they're, I, I talked to two other people here at the township at GFL, and that's what they're currently paying prior to this happening, they were paying thirty-three dollars a month to GFL, so. My three minutes are up. Have you spoke already?
I have.
Okay.
Go ahead. Do I put you to?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. My name is Pam Wise Azula. And I too am calling or talking to you about the one hauler. We did have somebody that sent out, they were looking for if you wanted to go to a one hauler last summer, I believe it was, and a lot of us voted on it. I live in a very bad congested area over by Macy Day Lake, but there was no vote on this. And we have like eight different landscapers in there with their trucks constantly, doing leaves, doing trees. We have building going on, we have trucks down there that are ridiculous. The buses, I don't mind, the kids have to go to school. But this right here is, this is uncalled for. I was thirty-five years at General Motors Purchasing, and this happens a lot when people, I had community disposal, and their letter is kind of, it's kind of funny because they're just mad. They're like, we're done, you know, November 1st, we're done, and good luck, best of luck to you in finding something, somebody to pick it up. I called them, I, they sent me back my check right away. They said, you sent us in money, we're done. They're all mad, that's why they're doing it. So we have to come up with, what are we going to do with our garbage? You want us to bring it here? Should we bring it here? Is there a place that you guys can subcontract it? I've talked to a lot of people on Facebook, I'm out there a lot, they're all asking me a bunch of questions. We have to have a ninety-five gallon container. To get that down a half-mile driveway is really going to be tough in the winter. To lift it as a senior citizen into your truck is going to be kind of tough. If you want another one, it's an additional ninety dollars to buy one.
Are you talking about the next five months?
Yeah, I'm talking about for GFL, if you go with GFL.
The contract with GFL on March 30th, 2020. You can have a choice between a sixty-six or a ninety-six gallon container.
No.
Yes, you can. Oh, yes, you can. Yes, you can.
It says.
You can have a choice.
It says for yard waste is the sixty-five.
Uh, no, yard waste is bagged. Recyclables, you have a choice, if you got a lot of recyclables, you can request.
Oh, sorry, for recycling. The contract calls for customers to receive a ninety-five gallon rolling cart for solid waste and sixty-five cart for recycling. So if you don't recycle and you have a lot of garbage, you have to get another. You can, customers will have a limited right to request or receive different sized carts. Carts will not be provided for yard waste. If you need additional carts, they will be available for purchase.
Correct.
So there's ninety dollars. That's another, so we've got the hundred and sixty-five, which you couldn't help, you didn't know they were going to do that, but they did. So it's another hundred dollars. Then we have another ninety for another container, and then we go up as the years go on, right, in percentages?
Correct.
I just think that it should have been a vote that means that then you can tell me, you know, who's going to cut my trees down next, who's going to do my landscaping, and who's going to do my building. There has to be a vote, there has to be some way that we know. And there's got to be some way you got to solve this garbage now, not thirty days. You have to tell us what to do with our garbage now. I have tried calling, I have tried going online, I go online all the time, nothing.
Have you registered online or you haven't been able to get through?
I called you here, you registered online, I can't get on. I can't get in.
We just did.
Okay, I'll go back on my phone.
I'm trying, I just did it from my address.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Well, I, I didn't sign up. It's processing.
Okay, because we haven't been able to up until this point get on at all. And I've called here a couple of times, they said come to the meeting tonight. Like I said, I just think maybe you can get an outside company to come in and pick up for us for a couple of months or whatever, until this contract goes in place, if this is who you want. But I just think we need to be careful with the no vote for something that affects the whole community. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? You've spoke already, I'd like to see anybody else who wants to come now. Yes, sir?
Jason Herr, Warren Drive. So, playing on something that you mentioned in the work session upstairs earlier before the meeting. Why not have somebody from GFL here in the lobby of Town Hall every day for the week, signing people up that cannot get registered online, cannot get somebody on the phone? Give them somebody to talk to. Get with GFL, get somebody here in the lobby so that all of these residents, 11,000 of them, have somebody to actually go to and talk with.
I put that request out to GFL. I can't dictate to them and order them and tell them what to do. We're not under contract yet. I don't have a contractual agreement. I can make that suggestion, and I have made that suggestion. I'm asking them to have two people here.
Something's gotta happen.
I know something has to happen.
You've got 11,000 people, and we can't have road, and come on.
And I'm not the supervisor that blows in here at 10:00, 10:30, goes to lunch and doesn't come back to work. Come by the parking lot sometimes, 6:30, quarter to 7:00 in the morning, and come by here 7:30 or 8:00 o'clock at night. I was here till quarter to 9:00 last Monday returning phone calls, because when I leave, I don't owe anybody a phone call. If they tell you they called me and ain't calling back, they didn't leave their number, or they're lying, one of the two.
Okay, so you're answering phone calls.
I do my job. I do everything I can possibly do.
And that's great, but these people still aren't registered.
I understand that. That's why, tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning, I'll start up again at 7:00. I'll call them and see what can we do to make this work, to make it happen. I'm doing everything. I'm telling you, I'm doing everything I can possibly do, and that pales in comparison to what my assistant is doing and working and what our HR personnel is doing, trying to make this work. We got people that are virtually, they're not doing their job right now. This is all they're working on, trying to make this work any way that they can. We are. I'm telling you, we are. Ladies at the back in the room, do you have any updated information to share? That would be Shelley or Arlene?
GFL, I can actually, I was gonna offer this to anybody in the room too before you leave tonight. If you give me your name, address, and phone number, I have a contact. I will provide that to tomorrow, and they will call you back from that list. They are working on it every day. They're working on catching up on the voicemails. They mentioned that. We do have kiosks here in the township. If you come in, one of us can help you sign up online if you're not able to get through. You know, anything, you can call the supervisor's office. It's 248-674-6201, and that number's on pretty much everything on the trash page, and we'll do whatever we can to get you in touch with them, to get you signed up for service. I did talk to a gentleman at GFL tonight right before the meeting, and you know, they are committed to keep signing people up, and we know that it'll probably go a little bit further into next week, but it won't be months. It won't be five months that you don't have trash service. It may be a week, it may be 10 days, but we will be signing people up in every step that they can take. Like Gary mentioned, you know, we'll come up with some solutions to try and get people here at Town Hall or whatever it takes to get everybody onboarded, you know, in the next week or two. So, that's the most recent update that I have, but please feel free to call us, and we'll do what we can to advocate for you. Anything else?
No, I just throw you a head up. And I did get a phone call just before tonight's meeting. I did ask GFL they could send a couple people here to sign people up tonight. While they're here, sign them up, get them downloaded in the system and get it going. And the message I got just before I come here, they couldn't get people here tonight. They just couldn't do it. So hopefully, like this gentleman said here, if we can get somebody here at Town Hall or our staff, like I said, can get it signed up and get people going. That's what we're hoping for, because I want it to be a smooth, as well, smooth to be an understatement, as good of the transition as it can be for everybody involved to get this done and over with and back to the way it should be. So, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, young lady, did you have something else you wanted to say?
One little thing.
Okay.
Patty Vitacinski, 5738 Shetland Way. I should have probably played the lottery because I called GFL once and got through, but their office is open at either 7:00 or 7:30, and I called right at that time, got right through to somebody, signed right up. What I, and I'm supposed to, and I know I'm supposed to address you guys, but actually it's for the people behind. What I did is, we have a senior citizen living right next door to us, and I felt very bad for them because they're snowbirds also. They're only gonna be here two months of the five that Advanced won't be picking up. I told them just to put their garbage in mine. You know, I think those of us who can afford it might reach out to the seniors on our street and try and help either seniors or people who really can't afford it. That's what a neighbor does. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got, I have seniors that are doing the same thing my neighbor would. I didn't want to suggest it's a problem, but people are doing the same thing.
Well, my neighbor's not one of those things.
Well, they're doubling up. I have neighbors that are doing that too, and I think if you can't afford the 165, I hate it much.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I've already moved my address, so if anybody else needs to put their garbage in mine, it's also.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Terry, can I have one more shot? Just not even three minutes, but you asked two questions earlier. As a successful businessman, of which I was also.
Speak into the mic. Speak into the mic, please.
Why would they, why would Advanced abandon their customers? We're not their customers anymore. For five years and the next five months, we've created an environment that we're not their customers, and I'd be the last one to defend them for what they did. May not be the greatest business practice in the world, but for five years and five months, we're not their customer because we created that environment. Second question was, GFL, we can't control what they charge us for the next five months because we don't have a contract with them. Again, unintended consequences. We created the environment for us not to have a contract with them, so therefore, they could have charged us $200 a month if they wanted to, and I don't know whether you would have said yes or no. But the bottom line here is, you know, guys, don't confuse effort with results. The results as of this moment, not that good.
Okay, the point you made there, and I can tell you this right now, 40 and a half years in the construction business, until I drove the last nail in the house that was by my customer, I didn't leave that job. I stayed there till it was finished, and again, Advanced Disposal bailed. I can't control what they do. That's private sector. They decided to leave early to create the situation. They did this by design. People can think what they want to think or believe they want to think. This was by design that they did this, period. That's all there was. And I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but Advanced Disposal is being bought out by Waste Management the first quarter of next year.
And I'm sure it was by design.
Sure it was by design.
The one thing I do have to say is Supervisor's Office, people like Shelley, they've been great. They have been the only, GFL doesn't return calls. I don't know if anybody realizes it or not. They operate on, they're a multinational company that operates off of computers. You have to send them information via email, and then when it's convenient for them, they'll get back to you. I was able to get through, but the long and the short of it is that again, these multinational companies, they could, the $4 million a year contract that you gave them, it's nothing to them. And that's why I say, when you say we got a five-year contract, again, try to get them into court if they, if they break that contract. Your city attorney will tell you, I'll be in the ground before you get them into court.
We get a performance bond. We get a performance bond with the contract.
Well, I'm sorry?
We have a performance bond with the contract. We do.
Again, I hope this goes perfect from here on out.
I do too.
The way it's planned.
Thank you.
I do too.
Yeah.
We all do, because as I said before, it affects us all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just have one extra thing. First of all, are you getting televised tonight? I heard somebody just called.
Your hair looks fine. It really does.
No, they wanted to see what was going on. A lot of people are interested.
Yes, no, it's live broadcast.
Do they? Because my brother just texted me, said we can't get you on TV at all.
Really?
So.
AT&amp;T, it doesn't work. It only works on Comcast channels. I've been told that.
Oh, okay. Okay, I just wanted to bring that up. A week?
At least.
Okay.
At AT&amp;T or Comcast? Do you have Comcast?
Comcast.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring that up. And then, did you get into GFL? Because I just tried, and I couldn't get into sign up.
It's fun.
It keeps spinning. Yeah, I've been spinning a lot with them. But, so my question is, do we have to pay the $100 extra? They're holding us ransom for whatever reason, who's ever bad, I don't know. But it's my paycheck, $100, and the other thing is, is there's nothing we can do about it now, and what if we can't get anybody to pick up our garbage? What do we do? I need those two answers. Do I have to pay that money, and what do I do if I can't get anybody to pick up my garbage for weeks?
GFL's price is $165 for the next five months. That's the price that they send.
Right, that's too much. That's a lot more. It's a hundred dollars more than what the contract is when you go into it.
But that's their price.
I know, and you're making us go into it.
Not making you go into anything.
Oh, okay.
No, we're not. Our contract starts March 30th, 2020.
Okay.
With GFL. That's the contractual agreement we have.
So I should deal with it. As a Waterford citizen, I should deal with it.
For the next five months, you have to have your own waste hauler, correct?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else? Okay, and again, I would like to thank everybody for being courteous. I know this is a tough situation for everybody involved, for being very professional, being very courteous, and I do, I appreciate that. It means a lot.
I support. Margaret made the motion, I believe.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Right hand. Opposed? Done. Thank you.